So we can watch this back on replay and those that are watching back on replay, welcome. And so if you're watching, if you are watching live and you're happy to have your, your, your video on, then it means that as we're going through, there's a huge, you know, practical element to this where we're going to be moving about, we'll be doing some breathing, sat down, we're doing some standing up, we'll be trying to move about, we'll be looking at the functionality of good quality breathing and we will be, um, we will be, um, doing some stuff at the end to use a breath hole to challenge our breathing and see where we're at with, with our breathing. So when it's being a little, it's easy, very easy, well, not easy, but we can, uh, learn some principles and some simple basics to improve the quality of the mechanics of how we breathe. And when we talk about functional breathing, um, a huge element of that is the correct biomechanics of how we are breathing. So I'll introduce all of those for us. None of this is like super complicated. Hopefully it's simple for you to take away and integrate into, um, your daily lives and your training straight away. Um, I know some of you are doing like the sports performance course with me and we go into a bit more, bit more detail on some of the stuff, throughout that. But for all of us, the idea is that these things are going to be simple to implement into your day to day, improve the quality of your day to day breathing. That's going to provide the baseline and the foundation for you to improve your breathing when you start exercising. If your mechanics at rest, this is a really important point. If your mechanics at rest are not particularly functional or particularly efficient, but you're not aware because at rest, my, as I sit here now and you sit listening to me or you're standing up listening to me, the demand your body has for oxygen is low because we're not doing anything. And the amount of CO2, carbon dioxide that's being produced is relatively small. So you can handle it. And how you get air in, whether you are making your ribs move and whether your diaphragm is working efficiently or not at rest can go unnoticed because you're not being challenged. Does that make sense? But when you start exercising, if you're the quality of your breathing in terms of the mechanics, if the speed and cadence that you're breathing at is poor or less than optimal, or less, or not as, not as efficient as it could be, then as soon as you start to challenge your breathing by walking or jogging or running or CrossFit or calisthenics or whatever it is that you like doing, rugby, football, whatever things you like doing, then that exercise is going to increase the demand for oxygen and it's going to increase the amount of CO2 that's building up your body. And that's going to place a challenge and demand on your breathing. And your breathing mechanics is how well you can, well, one of the elements of it is how well can you expand your rib cage? And remember your rib cage houses your lungs. How well can we, um, expand that to allow oxygen to come in? And then the biochemistry side of it comes down to how well we're dealing or how efficiently we get, we use that oxygen. That's maybe for another day. And also how well your body deals with carbon dioxide building up again. That's potentially for, for another session. We're going to focus this one on the, um, on the mechanics of functional breathing. So I've got a little, there's a few, this isn't, you know, I want this to be practical, but there is, um, a benefit to a couple of visual things because there's a couple of little videos to see, um, see what's going on. Is everyone okay seeing that? Um, did someone give me a thumbs up? They can see me screen right. There you go. Good. Lee, I'm loving your, um, strong beard look. Um, so I'm just shout out to a few people that I know on Facebook. Um, so functional breathing, unlocking the power of the breath. This could be any element of the breathing. Um, but this is what we're going to look at today predominantly in terms of the functional breathing. Um, the, I mentioned there a little bit of like biomechanics and biochemistry and these two things impact each other. And if we just think of, they're just fancy words for like mechanics being like physically, how are you breathing? Are you breathing with your diaphragm and your rib cage moving? Or is it a little bit like upper chest, vertical, um, shallow type of breathing and less efficient? Uh, the biochemistry is like, how well do you utilize the oxygen coming in? And how does your body deal with the carbon dioxide that's produced? Um, and we, these two things are, we would talk about them potentially separately or explain the principles of them separately, but they impact each other in that if I breathe short and shallow, so with poor mechanics, I'm likely to breathe fast. I'm breathing faster and I'm going to be blowing off more carbon dioxide and that's going to affect the biochemistry element of my breathing. Does that make sense? Give me a thumbs up if that, that makes sense. Yeah. Um, function breathing mechanics are going to have an effect on the nervous system, heart rate variability, digestion, stress, these types of elements that are, um, maybe less sports performance specific, those that are related to the exercise side of things, but really important for our overall health and wellness. And one of the many additional benefits to your wellbeing and your health that you'll get from improving your breathing, even if they aren't necessarily the thing that get you excited. Like I did not start looking, looking into my breathing because I wanted to improve my heart rate variability or my stress management. These are additional things that have come off the back of it. There's some interesting stuff for those of us that are into, uh, into, into the sport and exercise realm around spinal stability and functional movement. Um, if people are diaphragmatic breathers, they are more likely to pass a functional movement screen. So you're going to be a better quality mover. Your diaphragm creates intra-abdominal pressure, which helps with spinal and pelvic stability. And if we are more stable through our central column and our trunk are the control and, uh, uh, the extremity, we have those, um, extremities around the shoulders, the hips going outside from that central pillar, we get better quality of movement. Um, okay. And then the final bits, um, there'll be, there'll be other elements of it, but the size of the breath that we can take and how that's going to affect the oxygen delivery and our exercise performance. Your lungs are housed by, and everyone can do this now. I want you to fit, I want you to feel, grab your rib cage. I want you to feel your rib cage, understand where your ribs cage, um, starts right up at your, like right up by those collarbones and all the way down. Well, and, and find your, how low, if you can see my camera, how low, my lowest bottom rib comes right down to here. And I want you to be aware of all of those ribs. Touch it. By touching it, you're telling your brain, you're like, this is, that is a huge part of you. Your ribs sit inside there. They sit inside your rib cage. The rib cage protects it, but it's also massively important. It's not protection like, um, I'm thinking of like, uh, a jail where the bars don't move, like your ribs move. And as you breathe, it's really important that they move. Okay. So, um, I want to show you a little bit of, um, so you can visualize it and then we'll go through some stuff. There'll be three key, and we'll, we'll come back to that rib cage, but just understand where it is, how big it is, your lungs are sat in there and why it's going to be important to, uh, to utilize there. Three key areas, um, that I think are just the fundamentals of functional breathing. Uh, those that really, I've just noticed that's spelled diaphragm without a peach. Anyone else noticed that without a P? Anyone else noticed that? Apologies. Um, it's not an English lesson. Nose, diaphragm with a, with a H, um, nose, diaphragm and ribs, those three things, trying to integrate and connect those three things together is what we're gonna, is what we'll be able to go through and I'll teach it. Okay. I wanted a visual for some of those of us that are visual learners. That is your diaphragm. And it's like, if you haven't seen any of these types of images before, it's like, wow, let's just play that again. Like that is, that is not necessarily what I thought the diaphragm would look like when I first looked at it. It's got these two separate sections, left and right. The right side tends to be a little, is a little bit bigger because internally we're not, um, we're not symmetrical. We've got a heart slightly on one side. You've got the liver. Um, you know, the, the left hand side has to be smaller to compensate for other stuff that's going on there. So you can see that on, as we look at his left, but that's his right hand side, we've got a slightly larger portion to the diaphragm. So for sometimes people will find it easier to breathe into that right side compared to the left. And it will influence some of the quality of our, our movement through some rotational patterns and can go lower down, um, into the hip flex and things like that. And again, that's something that, that's something potentially, its effect on like movement specifically is for another, is potentially for another session, but just to have an awareness that it is impacting the spine, it's impacting the hips, it's impacting our internal organs. But that's where it sits. Its job is to pull down and get those ribs to widen. Um, the next one just shows a little bit of a visual of like some of those ribs actually moving and the diaphragm moving. So that's an exercise. So inhale is it coming down, pushing those ribs out. And we've got this widening as well as descending element to the diaphragm. Now, that's a graphic that someone's made. It's not, it's not necessarily perfect, but it gives us the idea that these things are moving and which, how we're trying to actually get this opening of the rib cage, a movement of, a movement of the diaphragm. Okay. I'm going to come out of that, um, for there. And then just to give us, um, go through a few key, um, practical elements, um, for us then. So thinking about what that, where that diaphragm sat and what that rib cage looks like, in order for us to get air into the body, we must expand that rib cage. Expanding the rib cage creates more space in your thorax, in your, in that central area. And that increase in space decreases the pressure. So an increase in volume decreases the pressure. Air is going to move from high outside of you to low inside of you because you reduce the pressure on the inside. Yeah. We can increase the space of that thorax by lifting the rib cage with like a vertical shallow breath. One of the reasons that's not good is one, it's going to be smaller. Okay. And if you do more breaths and smaller breaths, wasting air in dead space. There's about 150 milliliters of air lost in dead space with every breath we take, just parts of the lungs that we can't fill up with every breath. So when I'm trying to improve the quality of my breath for exercise, larger breaths, but slower breaths are more efficient. Coming back to breathing at rest as we are now, I don't need to be taking big breaths at rest. But I still want to be having nice movement of the ribs, nice move of the diaphragm. And it happens by air coming in, it's happening by expanding the rib cage. Okay. And that diaphragm is as it's in that, if we, um, what we can do this now together. If you find your ribs, one on one side, one on the other, locate them with your fingers, become aware of where they are. Your diaphragm, that funny like two dome shapes on each side, the front portion attaches underneath those front ribs. So you can literally take your hands, you can go underneath and you can actually feel that diaphragm. You can feel that muscle tissue that is your diaphragm. And you can just do a little bit of like real gentle, soft release on it. But equally, the other thing I want you to do is realize, look, I can wiggle my ribs, those ribs will move. An understanding by touching and feeling that the diaphragm sits, um, or if we, if we try to simplify that shape of like a dome around this, around the, the line of those ribs. And as you breathe in, it pushes down to increase space of volume that way. That's a pulling down a couple of centimeters. But as it pulls down, it also pushes out and flattens out, pushing those ribs outward. You've also got your internal or external intercostals that are going to help to widen and push those ribs out as well. So we're trying to think of the diaphragm pulling down and out, the rib cage widening, and air then just lets, we just got to with the nose, just let it come in, let the air come in. We're not having to suck air in with the nose. When I suck air in with the nose, really hard, if I'm exercising hard, there's no, it's going to close in itself. I want to be pulling air in from low down, which means a depth of breath coming from low of the diaphragm. So I've got diaphragm pulling down, the ribs getting pushed outward, and then air just entering in and out of the nose. That's what's going to facilitate my breath. That makes sense? And give me a thumbs up. Yeah. Cool. So why, one element before we actually practice a little bit more, why, why one element of, um, breathing from lower down with the diaphragm is important compared to the sort of shallow upper chest breathing? And we've got all the, in terms of the stress response, all about talking it from an efficiency point of view of delivering oxygen into your, into your lungs. We've got to get oxygen into the lungs. Then we've got to get oxygen from the lungs into the bloodstream. And then we've got to get oxygen from the bloodstream into the tissues. By breathing from lower down or starting the breath from lower down, filling with the diaphragm, I mean, one, the diaphragm is your number one breathing muscle. Like, that's his job. Like, let him do his job. Um, but when we are pulling air in from low down and filling the lungs from the bottom, we think of how does gravity act on the body? Gravity acts, gravity is a beautiful thing. Gravity is 9.81, never changes, and it's always straight down. It is a constant, just like the sun is going to set tonight and it's going to rise tomorrow. It's a nice constant that we can rely on. It's always working down. So blood within your lungs doesn't sit high up here unless you're doing a handstand, but blood generally within your lungs sits low down. To help, the body is beautifully designed. Um, one thing to help with that is you have the greatest amount of alveoli in your lungs, those little air sacs in the lungs are greatest lower down, where blood is going to sit because of gravity. If you are breathing from, more from up here and you get into a bad habit with your breathing when you're exercising, that shallow, fast panting breath, it's not effective in terms of stress response. It's not efficient in terms of the number of breaths. You're going to be breathing too many breaths, losing too much air in dead space. But also that air is not getting to low down where the transfer of oxygen from the lungs into the blood is going to be most efficient. So by breathing from low down, expanding my rib cage, the diaphragm being able to move down and air's entering in through the nose. So those three things, nose, rib cage, diaphragm, I'm drawing air in slower down where the transfer of oxygen, utilization of getting into your bloodstream is going to be more efficient. That process is also a slower breathing cycle than fast, short and shallow. That slowing down of the breathing cycle will also allow carbon dioxide within the blood to build, which carbon dioxide is the catalyst to allow oxygen to be released from the blood being carried on in red blood cells by hemoglobin. It's a catalyst to allow hemoglobin to release its affinity to oxygen. So again, getting the efficiency of delivery from the blood into the tissues. So breathing from low down, the diaphragm, more efficient of getting oxygen into the blood from the lungs, and then also more efficient because of the carbon dioxide effect on getting it out of the blood and into the tissues themselves. Okay. So let's have a little bit of a feel of what that is like and to, um, see if we can make some improvements and see some changes. Okay. So, um, one thing I want you to do is just to, um, sit upright in your chair, or if you're already standing, you can be standing. We're going to do it in a couple of different postures. We'll do it standing, we'll do it seated as well. I'm going to start seated. And I'm just going to take a couple, two or three normal breaths in and out through the nose. And I want you to notice without touching with your hands, I want you to notice, trying to take a couple of normal breaths, not big breaths, normal breaths. What's normal for you? What do you notice moving? So what can you feel moving? Or if you're watching on yourself on the, on the screen, can you see yourself? What can you see moving? Is it quite a vertical breath or is it quite a minimal breath? You not really see that much. Hopefully when I'm breathing at rest, I've learned, don't, I'm at rest, I don't want to be breathing at rest like I'm exercising when I'm not exercising. So I shouldn't be breathing like this when I'm at rest. You'd be like, what's up with your jacket? If I'm running up a hill, that's how I'm going to be breathing, but I shouldn't be breathing like that at rest. Okay. Um, and then to help you just feel that expansion, a lot of time it's helpful for people to put their hands either on the rib cage somewhere to just take a couple of breaths and feel them moving outwardly. Or if you feel like you're breathing from the upper chest quite a lot, one hand high and one hand low, trying to get a bit of a sense check of where's moving. So try all those things. Try this way. Try hands on the outside. Get a sense check of physically what's moving, what can you notice? And where are you feeling tension to create the air coming in? What's moving? Is it something down here or is it more up here? Is it more in the chest? Okay. Then I also want you to take a couple of large breaths to see how well you can expand that rib cage. Your lungs, remember saying that your lungs sit inside that, that massive rib cage that's all the way up here. Yeah. Comes all the way down to the bottom there. Your lungs are inside there. Your lungs will expand like massive. If you see doctors like with a, with a body where they're doing dissections and stuff, like you, they can blow up the lungs and they will go huge, way beyond what is possible inside of us. Because what's limiting the, how much we can expand our lungs is not the lung tissue themselves. What limits how large we can expand or the size we can expand those lungs is, I'll get to belly breathing in a second. Someone's asking the chat, good question. What's, um, what's, what's limiting our ability to expand the lungs and increase the size of our breath and our lung volume is how much we can move our ribs. So I want you to take with, just have your hands resting down by your sides. Now I'm going to try and take some large breaths. Take two or three large breaths. What can you see moving? What can you feel moving? And also notice how much louder your breath is. Still keep it in and out through the nose if you can. Does the movement start from here? Or does it start from lower down? Is it expanding out laterally and into the back and sort of in all directions and working its way up? Or does it start here and then you just get stuck and run out? Okay. And then I want you to also do that standing up. Okay. This is before we've done it in, this is like, and then I'm going to give you the, I'm going to give you all the magic tricks. No, there are no magic tricks. Just give you the, uh, the simple things that we can incorporate. So then just a couple of, um, normal breaths, standing up. Sometimes it can feel a little bit different when the, when you're having to stabilize through that core when you're standing. And then with the hands, normal breaths. And try them here as well. And then also take a couple of big breaths. So try and to expand. How easy does it feel to expand that rib cage? And what do you feel moving? Okay. And also remember the sound that it's making. Okay. Um, but give us some, um, in the, I'll just go through and then I'll answer a couple of those questions, but people, um, people give us a bit of feedback in the chat box. Those that are happy to have liked, just what that's currently like, and then we'll try and make some changes. Okay. So firstly, uh, yeah. So give us some feedback in the chat box. Belly breathing, let's answer that question quickly as we're going through. Belly breathing is, um, potentially been a bit, uh, the right intention of not of, um, the idea that we don't want to be breathing like shallow, um, with the upper chest. We want to be breathing from lower down. But your lungs are not in your belly. There is no respiratory tissue in your belly. Your diaphragm is very close to your belly or it feels like maybe is my belly. Um, but also when people think about belly breathing, it often gives us the idea that we need to push the belly out forward. But actually, the, the good breathing mechanics come from the diaphragm moving down, flattening out, the ribs widening. And as part of that, you'll feel your belly move because the diaphragm is going to push down and the diaphragmatic breathing actually helps massage your stomach. But the belly, like belly breathing, it's, um, the right idea of breathing from lower down, but it's, it sometimes gives people the wrong impression of exactly the, a bit more detail of how it's supposed to be. If that makes sense. Yeah. Um, one thing is the belly, like your abdominal muscles, like particularly your oblique muscles will pull the ribs in, which is what you want to do on exhales, when I get the ribs in together on exhales. On the inhale, we're going to diaphragm moving down and pushing and opening the ribs, widening the ribs on the inhale. So if you're tensing your abs or have issues or thinking too much about your abs, you can, your, your abdominal muscles can stop your ribs from actually moving. Um, so that can affect it. Okay. Um, so let's have a feel, um, of a couple of things. So, um, the first one is going to be just feeling, um, the diaphragm contraction itself. So I always explain it to people that like, the diaphragm is a muscle. If I asked you, everyone tense their diaphragm now, as in contract your diaphragm, it's like, you, ah, I probably tense my ab muscles. It's like, I know the diaphragm's somewhere in there, but I don't know how to connect to it. It's very difficult for us to, um, to contract a muscle correctly if we can't activate it. Now, if I said to everyone, right, tense your bicep, give us, show us the gun show, like, we know how to do that. We've sent messages or signals, neurons from our brain to the bicep plenty of times before. We know what that feels like to make that contraction. Okay. With the diaphragm, it's a little bit, it's just, it's just, the shape of the muscle is much more, is much different. You know, just flexing the bicep is a much simpler movement than the diaphragm actually moving those ribs articulating. So to feel the diaphragm contract, it's trying to pull down and flatten out when we inhale. If we give it a resistance by blocking the nose and, and holding the breath, we're going to ask ourselves to try to breathe in when we can't get any air in. If you think what's going to happen is the diaphragm, remember where that ribs are? The diaphragm is on this dome shape here. It's going to try to come down and flatten out. But if I stop the air coming in by holding, closing my mouth, holding my breath and pinching the nose, but try to breathe in, the diaphragm is going to tug down and you'll probably, you'll often feel it like trying to jump out of your, um, out of your stomach. So you might feel like that belly breathing then, but trust me, it's your diaphragm. It's like deep inside. So what we do is a normal breath in through the nose, a normal breath out for the nose. I like to suggest putting one hand just below where those two ribs meet, below your sternum. So I go normal breath in, I'll come close to the camera so you can see. Normal breath in, normal breath out, pinch nose. Now try and breathe in. That was me taking three breaths and it was like, ah, the diaphragm's trying to jump out of the rib cage at me. Could we see that? And then I want you to try that yourself. Try a couple of, try a couple of breaths like that. So you are normal breath in, normal breath out, and then imagine a picture what we showed on the screen before of where that diaphragm sits. It's trying to move down and flatten out, but you're not letting it. So it's like tugging. Could we feel that? Give me some, uh, give us a little bit of feedback on that. So it's, yeah, giving some thumbs up. Nice. Good. Good. So I want, we're getting, you can practice trying to make a nice, strong contraction deep inside there. It feels a bit weird, but it's like deep inside there. If it doesn't, some, lots, lots of people were saying yes, but some people will be a bit like, ah, not really feeling it. It's like, maybe you just haven't really accessed it that much before. We just need to teach the brain how to connect to it. So anytime where I started with this was, I was like, right, oh yeah, no, I think I felt something. And then I'd noticed during the day, I'd be like, on my computer, I'll be doing the washing up. And then I'd like, notice I'm like breathing from up here. And I'd be like, what am I doing? And like, why am I breathing from down there? And rather than just asking myself to like, just breathe correctly, I'll just do one, feel it and then go in. We're going to do some exercises next where I'm going to ask you to recreate that same feeling, but we're not going to hold the breath. We're going to let the air come in, but we're trying to recreate that same sensation of that contraction. That makes sense? Okay. So just do, just do one more for me. But I want you to try and make it stronger, like a stronger one, really like trying to access and feel that pulling down and out. So I'll do one with you. A nice, strong one. In, out. Okay. So I can really feel that moving down and pushing out. Okay. And you're going to use that on this next one. This is probably easier to do this one, standing up, if you haven't stood up yet for this. I can move my chairs and push it down. Okay. So your inhale, this is a great question. When does your inhale start? It's like, what do you mean? Like chicken and egg? What came first? Your inhale starts at the end of your exhale. And if I really want your body, this is one that should, if we create the conditions, I truly believe the body will breathe beautifully well. It knows how to breathe. We almost need to get out of the way and just create the conditions for this to all happen. One really nice way we can do this is if I overdo an exhale, if you really focus on getting all the air out on an exhale, you'll have a very strong urge to breathe in after a very strong exhale. That makes sense? Whereas if I do like just a little exhale, the urge to breathe in afterwards is, is fine. It's, it's normal. Okay. Whereas we're going to focus on get as much air out as you can, like really, really overdo the exhale. You'll then have a really strong urge to breathe in. I want you to connect to that same feeling we just did and try to control and facilitate the feeling of this diaphragm moving and widening out here. Where I want you to feel this, your hands are really important on this. I want you to go with your ribs. I want you to go with your ribs, find the very bottom. So the very bottom of my rib cage down there is like here. Okay, so look on my, like there, right at the bottom. And I'm going to put my hands just underneath them. So if I like really squeeze with my hands, I can nearly get them to like touch. Just underneath that bottom rib, not on top of the ribs. Underneath the bottom rib for this one. Okay. And then we're going to exhale as much air as we can. Okay. So. Keep exhaling. And when you got a strong desire to breathe in, connect to that contraction. Feel those rear hands like woo, those hands move out. Okay, before we do the next one, I want you to do one of those blocked inhalations, feel the diaphragm contract. So in, out. Okay, remember that feeling, how did you create that feeling? You're then going to do the exhale and then make that happen. Watch the, and watch that answer, hands below the ribs for this one. I exhale. Use your hands to push in closer, get as close as possible. Then connect to that contraction, inhale. Okay, and relax. I'm just, I'm going to get people so I can see you on screen. Have another, do one more, do one more blocked inhalation to feel that contraction. And then we'll do our third one. When you're ready, hands alone. Breathe out all in your own time, but try to get as much air out as you can. And then you're going to have that desire to breathe in. And I want you to feel that diaphragm pushing your hands and your ribs out. Notice and feel it moving. Okay, so I want the movement to be far more good, want the movement to be, so I, so watch, if you see me, I can go breathe out. Hands, can you see my hands are really close together now? Now I go breathe in. My hands haven't really moved and all the movement came from up here. So use your hands to give you some sensory feedback on that space. So I breathe out. Connect to that diaphragm, diaphragm is going to push down and push the hands out. But the movement is not coming from up here. If I'm going to do a lot, real big breath, it's going to start from here and it's going to finish with filling up that part. But I want to get good at starting from down there. Okay. Um, and give us a bit of feedback, can you notice, um, can you notice some difference and feel that? Your job now is can you do the same thing without the feeling from your hands? So the hands really help us to feel it and connect, feel that internal connection inside, but your hands were moving on the outside. Now take away the hands, because you can't walk around your whole life doing this. Yeah, take your hands away and then can I do the same thing? So I might do a blocked inhalation in, out, feel the contraction. Okay, got it, I can feel that, I'm going to recreate that after the exhale. So without the hands there, exhale. Try to feel without your hands, but feel it coming in. Then strong inhale. Feel it moving out. I need you to be able to have that like kinesthetic awareness, that proprioception around your trunk and your rib cage to feel that moving. Yeah. And people that are, you know, this isn't something that, um, is going to just like change overnight or just by practicing one or two or three reps, but take these principles and try to practice. You need to retrain those habits. If you're not feeling like, I can feel my belly moving a bit, but I can't really feel the hands widening, um. And that, I can't feel the hands widening, some great questions and things coming in the chat box, so thank you for that. Um, if you can't feel how much it's like, it's just practice. It's practice, like you, remember your body does want to breathe like this. We have to just, you know, have a bit of practice and create the conditions for that to happen. Okay. And one question has been around, and you'll feel this. So on the exhale, when we're trying to overdo an exhale, you went normally, in your normal day to day breathing, you don't do really strong exhales. But remember, we were doing a strong exhale there, overdoing the exhale. So that you then had a strong desire to breathe in and you were going to then feel that moving. Okay. When you do strong exhales, so exhaling like when you're exercising, you will, or if you try to empty the air, the lungs of air. There's a couple of different exercises why we can, we can use that. You will feel your abdominal muscles and your obliques, um, switching on. You will feel those contracting. So you will feel your abdominal and oblique muscles on exit, on strong exhales, because they're pulling the ribs in. Pulling the ribs in helps to send the diaphragm back to that dome shape it wanted to start at. If that makes sense. Okay. Nice, we're going to do one, this is one of my favorite exercises because you get so much out of this. I'll try to explain it, um, simply, but it can be used for increasing range of motion of the spine. Has an impact on the quality of movement at the shoulder. Um, and so it'd be nice to just test a couple of those things, um, before you do anything. So on this one, we need to, um, or Andrew, Andrew will, and then the, the reason why it's good for the functional breathing is it helps us to expand the rib cage more. Remember I said the easy, you can expand your rib cage. Uh, you're creating that environment for the ribs to move and the diaphragm then to move. Okay. So, um, you're going to, um, just cross the shoulders over, arms over. I want you to be standing, feet hip width apart, cross your hands over your shoulders. And first of all, we'll just get a bit of a, what's your, what's your spine rotation like? So you're, all of your ribs connect into your spine. If your spine doesn't move, your ribs aren't going to move. If your ribs don't move, your spine's not going to move. Okay. So just go to one side and then just see where do you get stuck? Make a bit of a mental note of what can you see on the wall on one side? And then rotate to the other side, what can you see on the wall there? And notice, just do it a couple of times, notice what feels like it's restricting you? Where are you feeling that restriction? Okay. And then also just for the shoulders, a little bit of, put your arms out like this. And then external rotation, the arms going back, elbow staying in line with the shoulders. And then internal rotation, shoulder, hands come down, elbows stay in line with the shoulders, elbows aren't dropping down. So external rotation, internal rotation. How does it feel? What's the range like? And then the other one, um, just take your arms straight above your head. And then look up at the ceiling, where on the ceiling, stay in the same position for later. Where do they, like, have a feel, where do they get to? How does it feel? What's your range like? Okay. And then what we're going to do, I will talk you through one and then we'll do it together. This is going to be a breathing rotation. For me to rotate to the right, the ribs on my right have to open. For me to go that way. The ribs on my left have to close off. This is, they're basically simple words for, fancy words for that would be, the ribs on my right, when they're opening, need to extend. And the ribs on the left need to go into flexion. So extension on the opening side, flexion on the closing side. Our inhales, um, are linked with or can activate a part of the brain that will facilitate greater extension. And, um, forceful exhales relate to flexion. Did I say extent, extension? Inhales, inhales for extension, exhales for flexion. Okay, you can use this on any extension and flexion patterns. So like flexion, uh, extension of the hip would be coming behind, flexion of the hip would be like trying to touch your toes. You could use this on anything. But rotation, we get to use both at the same time. So I'm going to take one arm, my right arm out at 45 degrees. I'm going to rotate to the right. And if you look, you'll see where my hand gets stuck, you can, I'll put on this, just by the edge of the door thing there. I can't go any further. In this position, I breathe into that right hand side as strongly as I can. In, 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 all of that inhales are moving those ribs to the right. And then I can't get any more air in, I try and get a bit more in and then I force the air out of the, of the left. I've gone from here to here. The forceful exhale is out of the mouth. Like that, imagine it's your 100th birthday and you've got to blow out all the candles. Okay. So we'll do, we'll do the, I will talk you through the left hand side. So put your left arm up, 45 degrees, rotate to the left and just get stuck. You'd be like, okay, where am I stuck? Now you're, you've got to breathe in and focus on that left hand side. So breathe into the left, in, 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 in as much air in as you can and really move, use the breath and move those ribs and then force the air out of the right. And swap over, go to the right, right arm up, rotate to the right. Okay, then breathe in, get stuck, breathe into the right, in, in, move those ribs on the right hand side with your breath. Then force the air out of the left. Think about those ribs. On the left coming down into the midline. Rotate, moving your feet back, your shoulder probably fired up as well, to the left. Arm up, rotate to the left, get stuck. And breathe in, really widen those ribs on the left. Forceful inhalation, forceful, then air out. Nice, I think you've got one more to do on the right. Thank you if you've not evened yourself up. So you go right arm up. Look, so get stuck. Breathe in, breathe in, breathe in on the right, really move those ribs on the right hand side. Then force the air out of the left and feel yourself unwind. Nice. Good, okay. Um, so then a couple of things. Did just give me a thumbs up, did, I could see some of you, did you notice as you did, you like breathed in and then you breathed out was like, and you could feel yourself unwinding? Did you feel that? Yeah, good, nice. Okay. So it's not going to be any surprise if you're stood in the same place, you cross your arms over, you rotate to one side, it's like, wow. Like, I was looking at there and now I'm like, oh, here. And I'm feeling, you'll feel, where's the restriction? Like, what's, what's not feeling as restricted as much now? You know, for some of us, sometimes I'll be feeling a little release lower down the chain, not just in the back. Okay. And the hip flexors can release, you're, this is again for another day, but your hip flexors are connected into your diaphragm at the lumbar spine. Check his shoulder rotation, how does that feel? It might be, oh, I've got more room or just like, it just feels nicer, like that feels smoother. If I start to position and mobilize those ribs, your shoulder blade sits and rides on your rib cage. So we can improve the movement of the shoulder. Um, take your arms overhead like, and then look up at the ceiling, it's like, by the way behind my head now. That genuinely feels, that genuinely feels better. And we did two repetitions on each side. Okay. Finally then, the other thing would be, um, go back to check what does it feel like? So we, we, we did some specific breathing in terms of like inhale, forceful inhales and forceful exhales, which help the brain to like activate like extensive, global extensions and flexors of the body. And we use the breath to try and move, physically move those ribs. For some of us, we'll have found going to one side compared to the other, a little bit easier. So remember we showed on that diagram and said that the diaphragm on the right hand side is slightly bigger than the left because of our internal organs. So a lot of the time, people find it easier to inflate on the right compared to the left. Okay. Um, and so you might have noticed that as you were going through. But if you now try to, um, do the exercise we did before, you might feel a little bit more movement happening a little bit easier. So if you do a blocked inhalation, so normal in, normal out, reach to those, try and breathe in. Feel that contraction and then put the hands below where those ribs were. Force the air out. Hands come together. And then a strong inhale, it's all that air that out. Feel the ribs, feel the ribs and the hands move. So you feel the diaphragm going down and pushing out, you're going to feel it out forward, but it's going to push the hands out. And hopefully you're getting more movement of the ribs, rather, the rib cage widening, rather than it being more, rather than it being that rib cage lifting. We're trying to get this more horizontal or lateral movement of the rib cage, starting lower down and finishing here rather than starting here. So now as well, that, hopefully that might feel a little bit better. If you now without your hands, try, start your breath from low down, but try to take the biggest breath in that you can compared to last time. So starting to feel from low down. So, you know, it ends up with all of this, but starting from low down there, does it feel a little bit easier to improve the size of how much we can expand those ribs? Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully so. Okay. Um. I've read some good, Stuart Hilton, amazing, I like those, I like comments like, wow, and amazing. The, the rotation one does, it hits a number of things in one guy. That's why I was going to say it's, um, it's one of my favorites to, um, to go through. Um, let me just, um. Stick that on. Um, so. I want to go back. Where's my nose gone? There he is. Um, so just recapping for us, like those three things, we want the air to be in, entering in and out of the nose. Nose provides some resistance, 50% more resistance than the mouth. And that gives something for your diaphragm to pull against in a good way and slows down the breathing for more efficient oxygen uptake. The diaphragm, hopefully we've introduced the shape of it and stuff, it's a bit, bit different to what we might have thought, but it's going to be moving down and flattening out. It's going to help push the ribs out. If we can get the ribs moving out, that's creating the space for the diaphragm to move more efficiently as well. Improve using some tools to change your kinesthetic awareness of where your diaphragm and where your ribs are and getting them to start to move, getting used to touching them and feeling them and manually getting them moving as well as using your breath to move those ribs and understanding how that needs to happen. And in that, that sort of like three step process of like the diaphragm's moving down, the ribs are widening and it's going to be widening in all directions, not just forward. That's why like belly breathing and just pushing your tummy out forward, isn't necessarily moving your ribs. Yeah, so rib cage expansion laterally, but also like in all directions, you are three dimensional being. Diaphragm moving down, that's our inhale. That increases volume inside the thorax, decreasing pressure, air can just enter in through the nose. The exhale, and someone asked me a question about feeling their, um, ab muscles working or their obliques, like, yeah, your, your, your core muscles and your obliques are going to pull the ribs in back together, because they widen on an inhale. On the exhale, they come in together, allowing the diaphragm to go back to that sort of resting shape. The exhale is practicing good exhales like we would do it and actually being able to over exhale, not at rest, but being, have the ability to do that is helpful in giving the, sending the diaphragm back up to that resting shape. Okay. Hopefully you felt some difference, um, within that, it's feeling, you've noticed that, okay, I've got some range change, like how I actually breathe. It could, it just feels a little bit easier, a little bit freer, uh, for the, for the ribs to move and the diaphragm. And maybe you, maybe you felt your diaphragm contracts for the first time, um, today quite strongly. Like, that's a really good thing, try to connect into that. If we're changing habits, we just need to think about trying to like intersperse this throughout your day as, as often as you can when you start to change and improve, um, improve your awareness. And I wanted to, um, there was, I'll answer a few questions to finish off, just to tell you about a few things that are coming up. Um, I've had some emails from people about, I know that some of you are on the sports performance course already. There's live sessions every month on the sports performance course. So there's a whole load of material for you to work through at your own pace. We do live sessions each month. Um, there's, the next one is actually tomorrow, um, the 19th of January, and there's two in February. Um, you're able to watch those obviously live, but you can watch them back on replay. And the whole course is 99 quid. Um, but it's just that one, that one payment and you can join as many live sessions, um, as many times a month as you want and for as long, uh, for as many months as you want. So there's no additional, um, cost for any of those, um, at all. And then there's a breathwork basics, uh, where I cover over three weeks. Zoom sessions like this, an hour for each session, starting on the 2nd of February. Um, there's only eight places available on that, keep those to a very small group so that we can work, you know, there's 60 odd people on this, on this call. I can't like give you everyone individual feedback, but in breathwork basics, where there's a maximum of eight people. Um, means we can actually give some, some individualized feedback as you're working through. Um, and then some of you have been interested in becoming an oxygen advantage instructor yourself. I'm a master instructor and so I didn't even introduce myself at the beginning, did I? That was bad. And I think I just assumed everyone would have, joining would have known. Apologies for that. I'm David Jackson and I'm a master instructor to option advantage. And I'm doing my first certification, starting on the 15th of February. It's nine weeks long, two hours on a Tuesday, every Tuesday for nine weeks. Again, you can watch all those things back on replay. You get access to the option advantage instructor portal where there's a whole, there's like a million videos in there of additional stuff you get to watch. There's sessions that, not live sessions with Patrick McKean, but you can watch sessions back with him on replay. And you get all those nine live sessions with me as pilot learning. And there's an example, an online exam to do and three case studies to do. But once you pass all of that, you will be a certified option advantage instructor. And then I think the final thing I was going to say, for, for those that are into the, into your sports performance and just want to have like a little bit of a taste, look at something, don't want to commit to doing like the, the sports performance course. You get the ebook as part of the course, but you can buy the ebook separately. It's normally 29 quid, but there's a, I've got an offer for everyone that's attended today. Workshop 10 is a discount code, so we get that for just 19 quid. And any of my things come with a money back guarantee. If you buy the ebook or you do a course and you don't think it was worthwhile or worth money or you didn't improve, like you could, I'm more than happy to give people the money back if that's the case. And because the whole point of this is to help you with your breathing. And if you don't feel better or don't notice any improvements or don't actually benefit from it, then that's only, that's only fair. And I'm, I'm here to try to share what I've learned through the option advantage and how it's impacted me and to help people with that yourselves as well. Yoga times runners, grazie. You've done the breathwork course and strongly recommend it. Awesome. Thank you very much. And so do you put any questions? So does the sports performance course sessions also have individual feedback, Chris? And yeah, so at the moment, the, 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 the number of people that join those live sessions, depending on what time in the month they are, yeah, it's, it's a small group at the moment. So we're able to do, I've even done one session where there was one person. So we did a one on one, because that's what it's about. And so, and just say for everyone that takes part in any of those courses, I just continue to give people ongoing email support for, and people will, people that have done any of my courses will know that you can email me anything ongoing and I'm more than happy to help. As I say, like this whole thing is, you know, Patrick McKean did this for me. Like he would answer any email question I asked him after I'd done, even probably even before I'd done the course. Because what we want to do is we want to try, we want to try and, you know, the, the, the principles and elements of improving the way you breathe at the basics level, the foundation of it is simple stuff. And we want, if we can help people get their heads around it, we're, we're improving the quality of people's lives by, because we know how impactful breathing is on all elements and aspects of your body. So thank you for those who joined. I hope you've found that helpful. If people might email davidjacksonfitness@gmail.com. If anyone does have any questions after the back of this, I'll send you an email with the recording to watch back later. And if anyone wants to watch it on replay, Mr. Barbitt. And if you have any questions, you could just reply to that, that email, that would be coming from me. Some, just some other questions coming in, which is fine. Hit about the nose, breathing, breathing at night, taping the mouth up for months, but soon the tape is off, I'm back to mouth breathing and snoring. Can you train us? So this is a really interesting one. And I asked Patrick this myself. I was like, Patrick, do you still tape your mouth at night? So Patrick McKean, the orthodox advantage trainer of all things. And he's like, yeah. And I'm like, surely after a certain amount of time, or my, I didn't say this to my, in my own era, I was like, surely after a certain amount of time, it, you, you've retrained yourself. Like I don't mouth breathe during the day now, but I've experimented with not taping mouth at night sometimes. And it's can be a bit hit and miss, but sometimes I'm, I'm, I'm the same. I'm back to snoring. And it's like, I thought I'd changed that habit by now. Like my waking hours habit is changed, but I still, what, four years in, I still tape my mouth at night. And I, I have, I get a better night's sleep from it. I feel better for it. So yeah, you should hear the conversation. Mrs. Jaco does as well. So our conversations at night are very much like, mm, 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 mm. And it's weird how much, how much, how much conversation you can actually have by just making mm noises. I'm glad, Yasmin, glad it's been helpful. Jeremy's mouth tape for the last three years, can't sleep without it. Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, no, it's interesting to know. Oh, tongue to the roof, a great question, Diana, tongue to the roof of the mouth, beneficial, yes. So go into more detail on some of these things around like the posture for, for breathing as well throughout the course. But yeah, very, very simple one, like trying to have the tongue, the tongue is another muscle like your diaphragm, but a strange muscle. Tongue to the roof of the mouth helps to stabilize the, the neck and help keep the airway open. A lot of the time we get lazy with the tongue or our, the, the shape of our palate over millennia has changed and we, we don't quite have the ease of room or space, depending on how the quality of the size of your mouth is. And the tongue can get lazy by, or it hasn't got the space and it gets lazy and sits, sits the bottom of the mouth or bottom of the palate. It gets tight underneath and weak to be able to actually keep it up there. So there are some like tongue exercises you can do like, all this weird type of stuff. I've seen a crazy osteopath in, well, actually he's coming on our podcast again, actually on Friday. Anyone interested in tongue, we're going to, I'm going to be asking some specific stuff on that. Have a listen to the Movement Strength and Play podcast by the School Cast Next. We're recording it on Friday, so it won't be out for a couple of weeks, but that is coming up. The guy, the osteopath's name is Cole Clayton. He's so good, he's not even on social media. That's how good he is, which that's saying something. That's true. He is very good. Yeah. And he does all this stuff about like training your tongue is one of the things that he does. Cool. Great. I admire say, oh, you go, it's almost like a planet. Their tape, I don't use these personally with the beard, it's going around the outside. But that tape doesn't go actually on your lips. It goes around the outside and just encourages your mouth to stay together. I'm like a classic M3 micro pore tape type of guy, straight across, boom. Nothing's getting through that baby. And Mrs. Jaco likes a vertical strip. I've done a few videos on YouTube about that as well. If anyone's, if anyone hasn't checked, I've just searched like David Jackson mouth tape on YouTube, that'll come up. Great. Thank you very much, everybody. And I said, I'll send you that email. Or is it auction advantage podcast? No. So the podcast I do with Tim from the School Cast Next is we, it's called the Movement Strength and Play Podcast. I'll put that in the email as well, so you can have a, you can have a link through to that. And Rachel, I will also put in the link to the YouTube channel and email as well, yes, of course, of course. Cool. Thank you, everyone. I will do that.
Thanks very much.
No worries, guys. Thanks and girls, thanks so much for joining. And if you have any, any questions, reply to that email that you're going to get in your inbox later tonight. And I look forward to hearing from you guys, to go soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye bye.
Hi, thanks all, thanks, 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 thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Cheers, guys and girls. Thanks for joining.